Spring sampling through Syntec of 2,600. We have WW Contracting Blacktop Repair of 18,000. And I believe there's one more in there. Yeah, diesel fuel. Some of your larger items that brings that $37,000 up. Those are your warrants, folks. Okay, we had a motion. Were there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Um, okay. We have a letter to the Pownell Board of Selectmen to whom it may concern. That's a letter supporting the Renegade Flyers Green Mountain Park Facility. It's a long letter. skim through. It's just a... Some of the highlights. It says you people in Pownell have hidden gems at the Green Mountain Energy Park. They're wishing to limit the noise and pruers are possibly opening Paranda's Box. And you may want to host an event that may occur and it may cause legal changes to that area, which we have also discussed. Um, the noise complaint, a lot of people have not complained about it. We've had a couple of people come in. Um, it's more or less supporting this and the different noise evaluations that we have down there between the track, highway, and it being a former racetrack. They're wishing that we be very careful on how we address changes in that property for the good of the town and for what's going on there presently. We have a letter from V L T C News. The Town Fair 2013 is October 3rd, 2013. And that is our mail, folks. Um, not to my knowledge at this point. If it's something you think about more, um, I think there's a deadline and you have to know by. Okay, well, somewhere in there, Mike, there's, look at that. There's a date that we have to know by. I won't take a lot of wasted time looking for it now. Okay, Road Performance Monthly Board Meeting.
This first thing on the agenda, they started to do some work on the bridge. Originally, uh, we went down, I met with the, the, uh, company that actually got the ditch for the repairs of the bridge. And they took samples on the abutments. And on the, find out, it looked like there was a three-inch overlay on the top of the structure structure. Well, they got down there to do the repairs on last Monday and kind of find out that's all one solid, uh, slab. There's no overlay on top of it. When they did the repairs in 1970, every spot that was bad, like over the abutments and a few other holes that were in the deck, they just went over it with concrete and a very thin coat on top of there. So it looked like it's all one piece. So the plan is now is to just take and do the repairs to the spots that are bad on the bridge. There's, uh, 260 square feet, uh, in about four or five different areas on, on the deck. So they're gonna take and start doing those repairs. Uh, I've made a couple of calls to the state, uh, the engineering department of the bridge and structures and, uh, haven't heard back yet, but, uh, what we're gonna try to do is, um, ask them if it would be okay to, uh, still put the membrane down and put a two-inch overlay of asphalt over the top of the, the structure as it is now.
After it's repaired, right.
Not sure if that's gonna be feasible or not, but, uh, if not, we'll have to find some other way of sealing the concrete.
Okay.
But that's the way things stand right now.
Okay. Now financially, this should be actually less.
Should be, yes.
If it's approved with such, okay.
And as far as that goes, there's some other spots in the deck that actually could be repaired that aren't really that bad that if I find that it is less money, uh, that I may just have them and go through and do those repairs.
Right. Yep, we'd be ahead of the curve at that point.
Right. Uh, I guess the other thing on the, uh, on the agenda, you guys all have a, uh, in your folders, a low-impact stormwater plan. Uh, it's basically a bylaw. It's a generic version from, uh, something that V L T, V L C T has, uh, come up with. Uh, there's a lot of language in it, but it spells it out really clear about, uh, homeowners containing their stormwater onto their property in different areas in different ways. Uh, we need to come up with something because we're, we're spending a lot of time repairing issues, uh, from people's driveways.
Right.
And a lot of them, the majority of them can be fixed easily.
This would pertain, I'm sure, mostly in the most new permitting for building now. I mean, there's...
It will be a step that they'll have to take before they actually get a permit.
Right, for driveways, different types of...
They'll have to have a stormwater plan before they disturb any material on the property that they want to build on.
Yep, yep.
Uh, but there's also language in there pertaining to, uh, pre-existing driveways.
That have been...
That are, when, every time it rains hard and there's material that comes right out into the paved, paved road.
Right.
There's a problem.
There's current, current ailments that have been...
And that needs to be addressed, and the town cannot keep repairing these issues.
Right. Yep. Yep. So everybody has one of these in their folder. I suggest the, over your idle times having coffee or whatever.
Yeah, another, uh...
Take a peek at this.
Ten or fifteen sheets of paper to that couple of hundreds you already have.
Yep, so...
Nothing to it.
When you're bored and want a little reading factor, so we can get a little understanding on it, so we can make changes to it or add to it or whatever needs to be done, just to understand it, so we can go with something like this.
They're, they, they, they talk about a couple Vermont State statutes and titles in there. Uh, those three or four or five right off the bat are, are pretty descriptive too, that aren't actually in there. There's also another one, which is Title 19, Section 111-B. That pretty much in one or two or three sentences explains the whole, uh, what you can do, what you can't do pertaining to materials coming out onto a town highway. Snow, ice, uh, gravel, sand, whatever.
Yep.
So, and that, that may even be in there, but I'm pretty sure it isn't.
Okay.
So what would this guy's thinking like if somebody was down there, they have to put the whole lane in?
Well, it's just, it's just like any, anything else when you've, uh, if you have a pre-existing driveway that comes down to a town highway and every time it rains, a good portion of your gravel ends up on the town highway that cuts a gash along the edge of a town highway, uh, and across your neighbor's property, and maybe your neighbors after that, they get to make it into the next culvert. Uh, some of that, some of that, uh, water can be dispersed in other areas on your property. There's not many situations that that doesn't work.
And with our recent rains, we've certainly experienced an awful lot of this.
Yeah, and we spend a month going around fixing and repairing the shoulders of roads, uh, and trying to make it so that the water can get into the culvert because of all the material, the extra material. It's just, it's just like you're beating your head against the wall. We gotta try something. We gotta try something.
Are you actually pushing numbers to see what it's costing the town for this?
No, but, uh, you know, after, after a rainstorm, when we spend, uh, three or four days, uh, fixing some shoulders, you know, three or four days, two or three guys, piece of equipment or two, it doesn't take long to add up.
And then you're back the following week doing the same thing.
Right. I understand we've had a lot of rain, 13, 14 inches in, you know, three months. It's a lot of rain. Uh, but, uh, uh, we gotta, we gotta do something. Uh, any, any help we can get would be greatly appreciated.
Yep.
But like you say, with the new, uh, new building permit, not only will they get this, uh, bylaw, they'll also get a Highway Access Bylaw, which actually has a lot of information on exactly how to construct driveway, so that the water and sediment doesn't end up onto the town highway.
Or the neighbors.
Or that material doesn't fill the town's ditch line.
Yep. Yep. Yep, this is something that we've discussed before and it should go in with, certainly with the permitting process. One of our trucks I noticed needed radiator. Was this one of the old girls?
Truck number six, the 01 International. The, uh, just the cores in the center of the radiator. Once all them little fins are gone and rotted, there's nothing to keep them from vibrating and eventually they just start leaking. And that one was so bad that I couldn't solder it. I soldered them before and put them back in, but... Yeah, that's an expensive piece. That's, uh, that was not cheap.
International, that's where they go.
Well, they're pretty much all about to say it. When they, when they got a couple of holes in.
Big trucks, yeah.
For the shaft, for the hydraulic pump that sits in the front, that's when you start getting special. And other than that, everything else has been going pretty well. We've been, uh, ditching all, a few different areas around town. We did, uh, take the grader out and pull some shoulders in and scoop up the material because there was just so much of it. There's, you can't roll it over the shoulder. Some spots you can, but...
I see Route 7 got some attention on Ladbrokes Road down there through the state.
Yes, yes.
Very nice.
Yep.
Very overdue.
Yeah, and they went a lot, they did a lot more, uh, ditching than I did because there's a 600 pair of telephone cables in there that I'm sure they must have been aware of.
Yep, I was glad to see that they went...
Yeah, they had a Dixie thing down there.
Oh, they did, okay.
Yep.
I see that, yeah.
Yep.
Well, the culvert that crosses the road is a three footer. And just above there, I mean, within two feet at the end of that culvert is where that cable is.
Yep. Yeah, I remember we discussed that before. Yeah, I was impressed with the, the work that was done to that. It should help alleviate a lot of problems there. So, good.
The sand shed behind the shop is, uh, it's probably close to almost two-thirds full. And of course, the warehouse has, uh, it's almost half of them.
We don't, we don't want to discuss...
No, but we're picking away at it.
That's cold weather stuff. Save that for another month.
It doesn't all come to once, you know? And, uh, it's just too bad we couldn't get into that, uh, little gravel business down there across the river because it would be, you know, you could get down there for three days and probably fill that building.
Yep.
Close to it. Uh, they got the blacktop done on Center Street, uh, and they're supposed, supposedly supposed to start crack sealing sometime this month. Like to try to do it in August because the blacktop's usually the hottest. And, uh, so there's, he's gonna, we're gonna try to schedule it sometime.
I'm assuming we're gonna do some shouldering on that road.
With, with, yeah.
Center Street because it drops a little bit in width there, which...
I don't like to get onto them.
Right, till it hardens up.
Give them a couple, three weeks so that it gets a chance to harden up the shape, even though there's three, three-quarter binder underneath that. And, uh...
I assume that, but I didn't, I wanted to announce it so whether anybody thinking about it would know that it hasn't been forgotten left.
It looks like it narrows, but the road is 20 feet wide.
Yep.
And, uh, where the, coming out of that apron there, it was really wide.
Right.
And it narrows off.
They, they widen it in different...
It just narrowed off by a quarter mile than what it did before.
Yep.
And with it, with a gravel shoulder, in the wintertime, you won't know the difference anyway.
They, it's, it's wider from that section just past my shop than it narrows again.
It does.
I'm not sure why. It doesn't matter.
Well, we're, we're, we're supposed to maintain 20 feet. So that's why the road's 20 feet. And if you look at Barber's Pond Road or any, the majority of the places that we've reclaimed and stuff, those roads are all 20 feet wide. Uh, the crack sealing, uh, we're going to, hopefully, within the next couple of years, we'll hopefully get another grant for the blacktop on the finishing up North Pownell Road. Uh, so we're gonna crack seal that first. Uh, and there's, there's, there's a little bit that still needs to be done on Bee Hill and hopefully, probably isn't gonna happen this year, but hopefully next year we should get a, at least a, a two-inch overlay over that because that's, uh, doesn't have a lot of asphalt on it. If we want to keep it, we're gonna have to resurface it again. That may be, uh, probably, uh, Oak Hill School Road, that's just three-quarter binder on that. It's not cracked up that bad, but it's, it's gonna need a, at least a, an overlay over But all the other blacktops that we've been doing in the last five, six, seven, eight years have held up really good. So, crack sealing thing does work.
Okay.
One, first, Burlington Road, is that eligible for grant funding for payment?
Payment, no. It's Class 3. Yeah, it's only Class 2. Uh, we have nine miles of Class 2 town highway. Uh, Barber's Pond South Stream, North Pownell Road, and believe it or not, Church Street.
That's our bullet. That's our bullet.
That's why the majority of them roads have been religiously repaved. Uh, Barber's Pond, every bit of, every bit of the stuff that we've done on Barber's Pond in the last 17 years has been through grants. We've been paying 10% of the cost. Same with, uh, North Pownell Road.
Second thing, last, uh, I had a couple complaints on it, and I have a complaint on it. Ladbrokes, Brookman Road, last time work was done, I don't know if it was done inadvertently or on purpose, but there's a wicked jump in it. You come right up and you just drop right down.
And where's this now?
Ladbrokes, Brookman Road, the intersection.
After we put the culvert in?
Just been within the last two weeks. I mean, you come up and go around there and you just drop. Couple people complaining their cars are bottom out and I know with a Mustang, it's, I've touched his ass before.
I, we was there, what day was it? Last Thursday. It was last Thursday we put a culvert because that's what caused that gash was the property and the intersection of Lad and Brookman. Of course, it's all mowed now and, uh, the water, all the rain we've been getting, uh, that culvert wasn't able to, to take that amount. So we replaced that culvert.
Believe it or still there.
So if, if...
You come up through and, come up Lad Road and just come around like you're the, the ten-year-old Lad Road, you just walk like that real quick.
Didn't even notice it when I was there.
Good jump, you know?
We did fix the shoulder the day before, two days before.
Pretty much all the way across the road.
I'll, I'll, I'll take a look, see if there's...
A couple people asked me about it. I know that I was coming through one day and I'm paying ten-year-old, whoa, what was that?
Yeah, that was probably, uh, you know, I, I, like I say, I don't know, I don't know when you were over there, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that...
About every day, so I believe it's still there.
I'll take a look. I'll take a look and, uh, that's something that can be cuffed off with the grader pretty easily.
I just, I have got complaints on it, so my job's done.
You usually have to drive fast in cases that you can jump.
Well, I don't drive fast.
My car coming down hits it, that end up off the road. That's how much it jumps up coming down.
Coming off broken road?
Nope, coming right down Lad Road. You know, the tree that leans right over this way, right over the road.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right about you with that tree. You come into that corner and you...
Didn't even notice it. I was down through there, uh, I went down through there this morning. Didn't even notice it. I'll take a look. Um, I guess the other thing was, was the pickup.
Hey, did we receive any bids?
I just seen one.
Okay, I have two people that I know that are supposed to, they've contacted me and were supposed to send in, so I'm assuming maybe by next week. Hopefully anyways.
That was, you wouldn't stay under $24,000?
No, we do, we can't spend that kind of money. It's too much.
Am I supposed to re-advertise it?
I wouldn't. I'd wait another week. Let's see what happens. Because like I said, there was...
The bid was due today.
Yeah, the bid was due today.
It was due 7:00 tonight.
Okay. Then we have to re-advertise it then. Because these people have talked to me, they just didn't apparently get it in or change their mind, but I, I don't think the mind changes there as much as probably just time.
While you're, well, yeah.
Right.
While you're at it, go, uh, announce it so that everybody's clear of what, exactly what we're looking for.
Yep, we are looking for a three-quarter ton to one ton, all-wheel-drive, work truck series, regular cab, preferably a diesel, automatic, uh, under 100,000 miles, under $20,000.
And preferably with a Fisher floor frame.
That would be a bonus.
Floor, yeah.
Yes.
Because that's what we use is the Fishers.
So, with that, if anybody does, we're going to be going out to bid again.
Try for the 29th or...
That's our last meeting? Yes, that would be fine. Yep, because we had five this month, right? Yes. Yep, 29th. Okay. Yes, mm-hmm. Okay.
And that, that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Casey.
Is the deadline...
What's that? I wouldn't even put a price, just, uh, you know what we're gonna spend?
All right.
You've heard it. Uh, when I advertise it, uh, you know, somebody's got something that's, uh, you know, $21,000 and it's almost due and it's got 40,000 miles on it, well, it's a different story.
Yeah, that's true.
Probably gonna happen, but...
Okay.
Think it'll happen.
All subject to approval or disapproval, so... Okay, our next is our transfer station supervisor monthly board meeting. Your UPAP.
Okay. Let me see if I can find the paperwork. We, well, I did the one event back in November of 2012 on e-cycles, TVs.
UPAP, with the air conditioner, talk into the mic, please. I think, I was just thinking that, well, it's gonna get hot in here and be uncomfortable, so if we can...
It's hot in here.
If we can just talk better into the mic, maybe we can survive it.
So, what I'd like to do, and we've discussed this and whatnot, and I had presented a memorandum of understanding before that you guys could kind of look over, and I've kind of filled it out, and I would like the board to go forward with this and sign it if there, so that we can start collecting this, uh...
Bee waste.
Bee waste.
Right, right.
As I said, this, this shouldn't, this should be finished in the black a little bit. It shouldn't be an additional cost to the transfer station. There is some items in there that you may want to decide that we would charge a minimal fee for because, uh, they are banned and we, if we accept this, number one, we, we can't require them to have a permit. Does anybody in the state of Vermont, um, and the qualifications are residents and households of Vermont, 501(c) charities incorporated in Vermont, Vermont school districts, Vermont business employing 10 or fewer employees, any person dropping off seven or fewer covered devices at one time. And those, the covered devices are the ones that we would be reimbursed for, which would be computers, computer monitors, any device containing a cathode, ray tube, printers, television, and computer peripherals. So those, we couldn't charge for, but we would take...
Would be reimbursed.
And we would be reimbursed from Good Point.
Now, the others...
The others would be PDAs, MP3 players, electronic game consoles, fax machines, wireless phones, telephones, answering machines, VCRs, DVD players, digital converter boxes, stereo equipment, electronic device, power cords, and chargers.
Okay.
So those, we, if we, if you want, we could charge a minimal fee for, for those. We have to accept it.
Okay, we have to accept it if we go along with this.
Correct.
Now, my question is, does Bennington, Shasberry, Arlington, any of these places have this in place?
Bennington has it in place.
Because what I'm, what I'm nervous about, if nobody else has it in place and we're the only game, then we could get outside interference.
Yeah. Um... The other thing I can tell you, I've been over this MOU a number of times, and under the terms, if for whatever reason this isn't working out for Pownell, either party may terminate this agreement in writing 30 days' notice.
Okay.
Also, under this, if, if the facility is being overwhelmed, and this is true with our trash.
Right.
That we can shut down and refuse to take, actually, we're obligated to do so until we make adjustments, so...
Okay. All right, so our, our butt is covered either way, which is important.
Correct.
Yep, okay. All right, we, we went through this quite a bit extensively here a couple of months ago.
Right.
So what's, what's the board's feeling on this?
I think we're out of moving on getting it, or accept that waste. A lot of people are talking about, they want to get rid of this stuff. They're waiting for a day.
The stuff doesn't last forever, so I mean...
Well, and it's convenient for our town people still.
It's convenient for us, yeah, exactly.
So, all right, that's a motion, Ron.
Yeah, I mean, a second.
And we have a second. All in favor?
I've got this...
Aye.
The only thing, I'm assuming that the chair is gonna have to sign this. I've done my best to fill this out. The only thing that may change on this is, I'm a little bit confused here. It says vendor, it's town of Pownell, and I'm assuming the chair would sign under collection, location, agent. In other words, what I'm saying, I can, I didn't get a chance to do it today. I can send this to Norm, and this may change a little bit there. All the verbiage and all the rules and regulations won't change, so if Steve were to sign this tonight, he, I may have to change something and...
Okay, why don't we just make the motion for me to sign it?
Okay.
And then it can be signed after the wording is done, so it's correctly done.
Okay, I can verify.
If the board approves for the signature to be done when this is corrected.
Make the motion, Steve signs it. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
I'll, I'll send that to, to...
Aye, okay.
To Norm and make sure I've got things filled out right.
And where the signature's supposed to be that I sign, so it's in the right...
Did you say VCI is on the new DVD player still?
Yes.
Okay. Um... That way I sign in the right place and we don't get it back again.
And it's, and I've done most of the work on, uh, because it is, we will require an amendment to our certification. And also, the thing that's missing on there is what they call an EW number, and I don't know if they assign that or the state does, but hopefully I'll get that straightened out and then you can sign that.
Okay.
The other thing, we met in Bennington on the 16th of July, and this is going forward with Act 148 and how not only Pownell, but other towns are gonna proceed with the new legislation. And as I go through this, I, I don't know if one of you, one or more board members is interested in participating in these meetings. Uh, I can do it. The, the key here is gonna be that we're pretty much on the same... Uh, I can do it. The, the key here is gonna be that we're pretty much on the same page, and I'll explain that as we go along. In other words, right now, what the, at Bennington, they had, they're trying to form like an alliance of all the towns in, in Bennington County. And the BRCRC preliminarily looking forward is making out paperwork for a grant. And that grant, uh, would be like for thirty-five thousand dollars. And it's gonna be up to each and every individual town as to whether they want to go forward with this. Or you guys may say, hey, you know, we're gonna take a wait-and-see attitude, which I don't recommend, or you might recommend, we're gonna do it on our own. Uh, like I say, presently, what they're looking to do, the BRCRC is looking to get grant money to help organize this whole situation.
What's the situation?
Well, the situation is, is how do we best comply with Act one forty-eight going forward, okay? Uh, there's a, and each town will still have its own individuality in certain aspects of this, but one aspect is like household hazardous waste. Each town is spending money. We, we partner with Shasberry, uh, but Bennington has one and, and Rupert or whatever. So they're trying to figure out a way to consolidate that and make it more efficient. And that would be part of what that planning grant would be, but in that planning grant, if they were given the nod to go forward, then it has to be matched by ten percent. And the, the, the people left in, in that, uh, in the number of towns that want to go forward with that would be obligated to, and it's based prorata on, uh, on your population, which would be thirty-five hundred. And if all thirteen towns did it, if you just divide it out, it'd be like two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. But Woodford was there, they've got a lot fewer residents, and, you know, Bennington was there, and, I mean, Shasberry and Powell are very similar in size, so... But it's not a, it's not a big number at this point. And as this goes forward, there may be more expertise that needs to be brought into the picture. So they would, they're again, attempt to apply for grant money for that expertise. So I don't know, because I'm the only one presently going to these meetings that isn't a select board member, like a town manager or something. So it's very important whoever goes to represent Powell, uh, that they're pretty much on the same page with the board. Uh, because there's preliminary decisions that are gonna be made, like the next meeting, I don't have the exact date, will be in September. And then we'll probably have a better idea of how many towns want to go along with this, and if other towns don't. Hopefully, they all will, but...
Now, App, can you refresh my memory? That one forty-eight, is that the long-term thing for this compost?
Yes, it's one forty-eight, twenty fourteen. Well, let me see here. Partial collection at facilities, facility owners that offer services for managing trash must also offer services for managing mandated recyclables by twenty fourteen. Leaf and yard residue by twenty fifteen, food residues by twenty seventeen. Uh, however, there's tonnages associated with that. And they've got mandatory recyclables by twenty fifteen, uh, I guess that's a repeat of what I had.
So people, uh, some of the townspeople are already doing it now. They don't have to worry about it.
That's correct. What, that's part of what they'll do. They'll analyze where each town is now. There's part of this we obviously already cover. It's just going forward, how is the best way, they want to, right now, it's called a SWIP that we're involved in, Solid Waste Implementation Plan. That'll probably change to a Materials Management Plan. Uh, what they're, I think part of their goal is finding value in the recyclables that are in the waste stream. And how to do that. It gets, the biggest part is getting started, and I think the BRCRC is, is on the right path by applying for this grant and, uh, going in the direction they're going. So, like I say, I can represent the town, or if someone, I'd be more than happy for any one of you guys, if you want to go, or all of us, to get involved in this. It's just that we should, and, and like I say, I kind of like the way that, that the thing is going now with them getting ready to apply for a grant. If this were to fall through and the towns that meet say we don't like this, then they wouldn't apply for this grant. But if they get a consensus, yes, that this is, we'd like to go forward with this, they would apply. And then, I mean, Powell wouldn't be formally locked into anything until obviously certain paperwork came before the board and you would have to sign it. So if there was something that we really didn't like, but, uh, like I say, if, if you had the idea, I'd rather wait and see what happens, then that needs to be transferred to that, to the BRCRC and whatnot. Or if you said, hey, I think I can do it better on my own, and we'd rather go that route.
All right, so what I'm understanding you to do is we will have one more meeting with you before they have their meeting.
Yes.
So you will have time to refreshness again to see if anybody here would like to go with you.
Sure.
Join you at this meeting.
I mean, I can send that, if, if Mike isn't sending it already, I can send that date to Linda so that she will have it and, and whatnot. Um, the other thing, let's see...
Because the way our scheduling is going, it's hard to get out there a month or so ahead now and make a plan.
I know. Uh, a meeting that I didn't go to, it was up in, uh, Middlebury, and it was on the new paint legislation. I didn't want to make that, I don't want to say that these aren't important, but, uh, that was too far to travel for what I figured we would get out of it. And hopefully, they'll have something closer. Basically, they're trying to, they're establishing a stewardship for the, the paint law. Uh, like NEMA is the steward over the, the bulbs and whatnot. And then they make sure that the pathways are created for people to get rid of their bulbs, and that's what they're doing with the, with the paint law. So that's something I can just bring you up to date on.
We certainly get notification on this stuff, so...
But, and that could be really helpful to people. There's a lot of people that have paint that they want to get rid of, and, and, I mean, if it's latex right now, they're drying it out and putting it in the trash. If not, it's hazardous household waste day. And we do have a meeting scheduled, myself, Mike, and Margie. I think it's the fifth of September for the Fall Household Hazardous Waste Event. So, that's pretty much it for now, unless...
Board have any questions for App? Okay, with none being heard. Thank you, App.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Oh, I'm not giving you a...
Don't have a date yet?
I do have a date, but, okay, I, I had a little issue in the spring, and we're gonna confirm it will be... Right. Yes.
As far as to that hazardous, Betty and I were kind of alone. We got up there because we didn't see any signs. We got off on the airport road in Shasberry where this was actually. I'd never been there before.
Okay.
I wasn't the only one, because somebody behind me was following me, thinking I knew how to get in there. Is there any way that you can talk with the powers that be up there to, uh, have adequate signage on the road, so directing people to where they can go?
I can bring that up and see what we can do, yeah, yeah.
Make sure I'm not the first one, and that person behind me wasn't really the second person. He could probably sat in the morning.
And that's one of the things they would like to do in this, moving forward with this other plan, is, is to eliminate this twice a year and make a, make it available to people more times a year. So it's, you've even said it to me, you know, what you, you having at this date, and I'm going away to a wedding or something like that. So that, that's part of what they want to do in this planning to go forward with Act one forty-eight.
That's why I thought maybe it'd be good for each, maybe each individual town could have one, and then combine and ship it all up. Because that way, make it more, more convenient for the average town people to, to go to their own place, get rid of it, and then...
Right.
Go get up to someplace else.
And we discussed that part of what, Bennington was going to have a, a permanent, actually build, building up there for it. And part of what came into play there was generator status, and then insurance. And actually, that came into play with the outfit that was gonna provide the service. So that's part of the discussion that's going on now, and, uh, I think it's gonna take some time, but I, I think that's coming. And the facility will be available to people more than just twice a year.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, under Old Business, Powell Tanrey Lands, Lagoon and Millsite easements. Uh, we've all had a copy of that in our hands for a while now.
I, I received, um, email from Peter Holden today, and he says, I believe the Agency of Natural Resources easements are now ready to finalize. If the board approves tonight and authorizes Steve to sign, I will ask Matt Chapman, who's the, um, state attorney, to forward the originals for signing, so let me know if you have any questions.
Okay. Okay, like I said, we've had this, we've gone over it. Peter has seen it, gone over it. What is the favor on the board?
I wonder what you're saying.
What's Peter thinking about it all?
Yes, he's, he's in favor with the direction it's going. So yours is a motion? Okay, a motion. We have a second for me to sign. Have Peter go ahead with this. All in favor? Aye, okay. Okay, we have two short executive sessions. I will touch base. One of them is, it's legal, and we have a letter from one of our auditors. Um, it's pertaining to status on time cards. This I will announce out loud only because we did receive it from two of our auditors, and our, our town's lawyer has this and is looking into it. So that part of that letter is questioned. That's me and taking care of it. Uh, the next one is, we had set in our meeting that we had an executive session on last week to have our auditors send us information to this table this evening pertaining to information that they had sent to either to the state police or the AG's office, uh, doing an investigation on us. Uh, we never received this information. We asked them to bring that to us or have it shipped to this desk this evening. So the executive session that we will be going into at this point will be to talk about this particular issue. So I need a motion for an executive session on that. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Okay, we asked in our meeting...